To order. Madam Clerk, when Councilmember Potasnik stops harassing you, if you could read the
[Laughter]
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice that this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building, posted on the township website, electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers, indicating that this work session, regular meeting would take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 28, 2022.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed and remain standing followed by the invocation by Councilwoman Sheba Oden.
Let us take the next few moments of silence to each seek in our own way whatever sources of inspiration will grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Madam Master Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Embarrasson, Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilwoman Oni Jaka.
Here.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
We're on to commendations and proclamations, the Pace Club commendation. Sending that. Councilmember Potasnik.
We've only been corresponding over email. Well, hopefully she gets here. My name is Ed Potasnik. I'm a council member in Ward One here in Franklin Township. And this commendation is for a student-led gay straight alliance at the high school that recently formed. This is Pride Month, and it reads, "Whereas students led by then sophomore Kay Locke, who identified with LGBT community along with their allies advocated for a safe place within Franklin High School where they could meet and discuss their needs, build a support base and make new friends; and whereas Pace Club was recognized as a bona fide Franklin High School in September of 2019 to support and protect its students representing the LGBTQ school community and their allies; and whereas the acronym was a collaborative effort of the club members and their allies, with each letter representing as follows: P for protect, A for accept, C for care, and E for educate; and whereas club members worked tirelessly on their book entitled Empowering Teardrops, which has been utilized as an SEL research for club members and their allies. Whereas major goals of the upcoming school year are to write a second book, which will be used as a fundraiser, and to form a partnership with community members in hopes of building a safe house in our community for adults in crisis in LGBT community. Now, therefore, we, together myself, council member Ed Potasnik, and Mayor Kramer, on behalf of the Township Council, do hereby commend and recognize the members of the Pace Club for their timeless efforts and dedication in helping the LGBT community and its allies." And I'll just take a point of personal privilege. Dr. Nelson? Ah ha! Come on up. This is for you. I don't know if you heard the whole piece, but we just, the council, I particularly want to commend you, you know, as the first openly gay member of council. And, you know, from when I came out in, I guess it was college, how challenging that can be for folks and back into high school. You know, it's not always a comfortable thing to be out and proud of who you are or questioning. And you get bullied, and it can be very, very difficult. And the journey for me has been similar, but I want every young person to know that it gets better and that whatever you're struggling through, we want to make sure you stick around and through it because it will get better. Folks like this council and this community are working every day to make it more inclusive. We have some policies on the agenda tonight along those lines to reduce discrimination in our hiring practices and make bathrooms more available and gender nonspecific in our community. And I think those are important steps and the kinds of things that we need more of. But your leadership, and I can tell you as a young person what it would have meant to me to have someone like you in my life, is just so particularly important, and we all thank you. And I'm going to give you a hug if that's okay. And--
Ask you if you want to share anything.
So, this is the book, Empowering Teardrops. And we were going to do a fundraiser, so I'm not big on selling candy or anything. And since after pandemic, I said, let's do something safe, so we talked about writing a book. I contacted a company that I knew of, and it was like, yeah, we'll send you a kit. But as I began to get entries, I realized that I thought I was going to get this sweet, cute little poetry. It was more of a purge of the trauma that many of our students were going through while they were home on the pandemic. And I had to respect that. And I had a big meeting, and I said, how do you want to go with this? So one of the students said, let's call it Empowering Teardrops. This is our moment to empower our teardrops. So as you would read the book, there are no names after any of the writings to protect the identity of the students or anything that they were discussing. So therefore, in the back, when you get to the end, they are acknowledged as empowered teardrops. And that's real important. I know, like, some people have their issues with certain communities and certain types of people, but let me tell you, as a teacher, as a teacher going into that high school every day, I had to take notice. And if I stood by myself, I stood by myself to protect the students that thought, that they thought needed protection, and they put that honor on me. So I just want people to have an open mind, because when you're dealing with young people, they're going through a lot. I tell you, I've never cried so many tears, I haven't cried that many tears over my own children. I cried so many tears when these entries start coming in, and I'm telling you, I had to pray. I had to really pray because I reached out to some of my friends who are Christians, and they were like, girl, I ain't got no time for that and all that kind of stuff. Uh-uh. Because when you see a kid in crisis, that becomes your kid. When they reach out to you as a mother, I feel their pain. I didn't have to birth them, but I feel their pain. So this was a very important journey for myself as far as growing and supporting the students at the high school. And I just want, if anything that I try to do, please support me. You can ask me to come to support you for anything, but trying to get a safe house for students, and I'm going to tell you why. I had a student that graduated three years ago call me two weeks ago in crisis. Now, at this time, this person is a young adult. And I'm talking, and the whole time she's talking to me, I could tell in my gut, if you're a mother, you just know something's not right. You can read between the lines. And I said, what's going on? Because you're not sounding clear to me. I mean, you're talking perfect, but it's not clear. I feel it in my gut. That child had been homeless for a month, living in their car. And as a transgender young person, that's a dangerous thing. That is very, very dangerous because they are the number one targets. And I tried my best to find her location, but she was too embarrassed to meet with me because she hadn't washed or whatever. But I stayed on that phone, and the whole time I'm on the phone, I'm on a computer, and I'm thinking like, where can I get help? Where can I get help that she'll feel safe? I remember reading an article a year ago about a program called RAIN, a safe house that was developed in Essex County. And I told her, I said, listen, while we're on the phone, I said, just call this number and then call me right back. And they were willing to help her on the spot. They only needed the COVID testing, which was fine, because to her, one more night in the car, but if I'm going to get safe housing, I'm going to do it. And they offered her the safe housing the next day, because I hounded her, like, I don't know what, I was calling, texting, and they offered her the safe housing. But luckily enough, this has a happy ending. Her parents accepted her back into the home, and that's what we want. And I get it as a parent. I get it. You want to raise that son to be football, basketball, you want to raise that daughter, you know, to be a nurse, teacher, whatever. But it's not your journey, and you have to understand that, and that's what I had to understand. So one of the ways to understand, I had to educate myself. And I went to, in Philadelphia, they have the largest trans wellness conference, and it's free. And I would encourage anyone who can go there, this year is virtual, but they have international speakers, they have a medical track for all the doctors that come from all over the world. And I went in two years ago as a volunteer. Was I kind of scared and nervous? Yes, I was. I didn't know what to say, if I'm saying the right pronouns. I didn't know who I was talking to, if this was a transgender woman or what, I didn't know. They took me through that journey, and they held my hands, and they were the kindest people, and I learned so much in that workshop. And one of the, one things I did, I monitored workshops. They had me be like a little monitor. And one of the workshops I was in, it was set up something like this, it was parents who totally know my kid is going to be a man, that's what I birthed. It was parents who had went through that journey, but then had come to terms. And on the other side, it was parents who, this is my child, I love them to life regardless. And then on the panel, you had every LGBT, all those initials, somebody was represented. And it was the best conversation, the most emotional conversation I have ever been involved in. I couldn't even go to the next workshop because I was so overwhelmed with just the discussion and how at the end everyone came together. Because the bottom line, they're our kids. They are, they are our kids. And if you can love a drug dealer, a murderer, then you can love them too. They're no different, you don't even know. You don't know what I am. Okay? But I'm a straight woman, but I feel for those students, and they're the best, I'm telling you. I'm telling you, they know their struggles, they know what they have to go through, and they need that support in school. They don't need to be looked at like there's some disease or something. They're not. They're our children regardless. I don't care, they're our children, and that's the mindset you have to have. How would you like it if I was your child's teacher, and because they were in that community, I said, no, but I can't teach you today. Let me try and turn on this side. You would be at Dr. Ravalli's office in a heartbeat. I'd probably be up on tenure charges. But the point I'm trying to make, just love kids. Today, in this world, we got to love our children, we got to love them when we don't want to love them. But the bottom line, so many of them are suffering because they don't have that love. So you have an ounce of love, just, just open your arms up. I'm telling you, it's a rewarding experience. I think I've worked the hardest as an advisor for this group than any other group. I've had to educate myself. I'm still going to classes, and that's my phone because the kids were on call, they were on their way. They were coming off of work, I'm sorry. But I just want you to, I'm trying to get a safe house in Franklin, because I don't want our kids to be in crisis and they have to travel to Newark, because I don't know if they have coffee or, you know. But she had a car, so I knew she could get there. But how about our kids who are on foot? We got to protect our kids. It's a mean world out there. I've worked with kids in Philadelphia, and let me tell you, it's tough. It's tough, but it's toughing me up for people when they come against those kids. I'm ready. I'm ready, because I'm not going to work to be liked. I'm going to work to protect kids and to serve the students and the families that attend Franklin High School. I'm so sorry, but this is one of the students.
One thing for sure that I'll say is, you know, we've gotten a chance to connect, and I think your vision, but most importantly, your passion is infectious, and I think there's a lot of people that would like to help you in your journey to help these students in their journey. And it's, it's very touching to me personally, and it means the world of difference to our young people. So I just want to thank you. And this, this commendation is for the club and for you. And when they get here, we'll give them a wave, and maybe if they want to stick around, it could be a long meeting, look in the audience, we could take a photo afterwards. But if you want to, that guy has a camera there, if you want to look at it. Hold your book nice. Go that way. Let's give it up for the Pace Club.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to open to the public? So move.
Second.
Moved in second. If all in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion is carried. We are now going to open to the public, where people may speak on anything regarding government. We'll give you five minutes to speak. May only come up once, no yielding of time, and, oh, please state your name and address when you come up. What, oh, no, go ahead.
Benjamin Guy, 35, Patton Drive. Two things. One is I want to point out, August 13th, August 14th, August 20th, a week of people will be having a festival in the parks around here. You'll be getting more information come July. Just being here on behalf of Mr. Sanders because he's, you know, he's a little bit immobile, and he's not able to actually tell the community about public programming that he wants to bring the community, community together on. So that's one thing. Second portion is that I just have a question for the township manager directly. For when they paved the road for Amwell Road to Hamilton Street, Amwell Road and Hamilton Street coming down from the county at all, I was trying to find out, why did they stop at one point, and why did they always go down to Hamilton Street? Because I know the county was actually facilitating that actually paving project, and I was trying to find out, well, why stop at a certain point? Why didn't they go all the way down? Because that's a whole county road, that was, that was one thing that was there. The second portion is that just for, just for us as a community all together, and I want to make sure that there's somebody here on a regular basis from the U Center, just so that it keeps, keeps the kids understanding what's going on for the, for the summertime. I would like the county council to make a request to actually have somebody here on a regular basis from the U Center to actually give updates, not just on behalf of the councilwoman, but also for the public programs that are actually going on the U Center to actually, so that the community can embrace the U Center a little bit more. I think if the program coordinators actually come here and say a little bit more about what's going on, it would actually give a little bit more en rose to faces and names over there to actually what's going on with the, with the U Center all together. So that was, that was just another suggestion that we're actually having there. But also, this is for the actual council. When you file an open request for, you know, for utilization, usually, what's usually the response time for open requests? That's one thing. And what's supposed to be disclosed during an open request for, for use, for just general purposes? Because just for public opinion and actually for research and statistical data, I just want to know what's usually supposed to be disclosed during that period of timeframe for public, a public access and open requests. So that's my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you want to answer the open question?
An open request is usually responded to within seven business days, and depending on what the records are, sometimes they can go further. It all depends on what's being asked for.
And also, just, I'd like to add to that, it needs to be a public record, not something that is asked to be created, but an actual public record. And that's what the Open Public Records Act is for, is for the disclosure of public records, not for the creation of reports or, or things of that nature. It is for records that are on file in the township. And as far as your question about paving, I guess, you know, that would be better directed to the county commissioners. They fund the paving of Hamilton Street and Amwell Road, and their contractors who have been awarded the bids are the ones who do that work. The township has nothing to do with the paving of Hamilton Street and Amwell Road.
Okay. Anyone else? Come on up.
Janet Goldstein, 47, Saratoga Court. At the meeting, and at the Canal Walk clubhouse between the mayor and the residents of Canal Walk, we were promised that Metlers Road could not be used as a street for, for semis because it was going to be restricted to trucks less than four tons. Here's the ordinance that we were promised, and I don't see Metlers Road on this ordinance.
We're passing that ordinance on second reading tonight. We passed it on first reading last time. It's on the agenda.
It's the second reading, ma'am. The first readings are for Weston Road and Weston Canal Road. Metlers Road was introduced at the last council meeting and will be adopted tonight. It's, it's item number 13, I'm sorry, 12A on your agenda.
Because we could not have done it any faster than we're doing it.
Okay, thank you. I have another question also. If I owned a private house in Somerset, I would not be allowed to pave over my lawn and paint white lines down it and cover all the porous surfaces. And yet, I see the proposal for the warehouse has almost every inch of land covered with asphalt. What percentage of land does a warehouse have to leave open so that the rain drains into the ground and not onto the neighbors?
So I'll leave that answer to Mr. Vince Dominic. He's more of an expert on that. But if he answers now, he's going to use up the rest of your time.
It's fine with me.
You got to speak into a microphone, Mr. Dominic.
The zone permits up to 65% impervious, so, or 60% impervious. So you can have, you have to have at least 40% impervious, pervious surface.
But then tell, talk about the stormwater.
The, the, the stormwater is required by both the township, the state, and the, and the county, and all three will review those. The, the two things you have to remember with stormwater is, number one, the amount of water that goes off the property has to be reduced. The rate that the water goes off the property has to be reduced. So instead of going like this, it has to go a little slower. So if anything, development lessens the ability for additional stormwater and also makes it less of the ability for there to be flooding on adjacent properties, because like I said, the water goes slower off the property and less has to go off. That's, that's just the way that stormwater regulations, and the state of New Jersey has some of the toughest stormwater regulations in the country.
My name is Bridget Brown, and I live at 2108 Enclave Circle, one of the condo buildings in Canal Walk. I've lived in my building for 11 years, and I've always enjoyed being surrounded by trees and open fields as soon as I travel a few minutes from my home. Although I'm not directly affected by the proposed warehouses, as were many other residents of Canal Walk, we will all be concerned with the increased traffic and the pollution that will be generated. I have a vision of what will happen should these be built, as almost all of my surroundings have changed with, with the appearance of, appearance of warehouses on both Randolph and Schoolhouse Road. Many is the time now that I've had to wait for a large tractor trailer to turn into a driveway or another road before I can proceed. In addition, sometimes I'm behind one of these monsters going the same way as I am, and I cannot pass because there's not enough room to pass them. We simply have to go on Schoolhouse Road to get to our grocery, pharmacy, clean, dry cleaners, et cetera, the usual efforts of people who live in a situation like we do. The additional smoke and smells due to the increased traffic will be a health hazard for many, for many, due to these dangerous exhaust fumes. I travel down Metlers Road at least three times a week to visit my family on River Road, plus my church is there too. It's also my route to 206 and beyond to avoid congestion on other routes. Trucks exiting from the warehouse bays onto Schoolhouse Road will prevent easy access. Before going and coming home, Schoolhouse Road will also be difficult to turn onto. And all this is above is based on the proposal as, as the plans as projected. Should the plan be approved, there'll be a time of even greater difficulties during an unknown period of what the construction will entail. To get to a grocery store, we will most likely have to exit Canal Walk by the back gate, then go to the end of Metlers Lane to Amwell Road. We'll then have to go along the way to Alhersworth Avenue. All this adds to our mileage and the time for just a simple errand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person.
Kiki Anastasikos, 3204, Enclave Circle in Canal Walk. I represent myself, but tonight I also represent hundreds of neighbors and friends who live in Canal Walk. And as you, I'm sure you know, we are extremely, extremely disturbed by the possibility of having a monstrous warehouse with all that it brings along. And I know this council looks at the positives of having warehouses from economic development to jobs, and I can understand all that. But I would urge you to also look at the long-term costs of depending so much on warehouses for our economic development. I'm talking about the long-term impact of pollution. I'm talking about the destruction of shade trees and natural habitat. I'm talking about nearly 2,000 citizens over 55 years old with extreme, in some cases, health conditions, which are only going to, going to become worsened by the, the added disruption in their lifestyle and in their environment and in their breathing, noise pollution, and so on and so forth. We're not here because we don't like to have these warehouses in our backyard. I'm sure everybody in this room is familiar with the NIMBY concept, not in my backyard. We're not those privileged upscale people that we don't want the warehouses in our backyard, okay? We're very concerned about Newark and Camden and a lot of other cities where the citizens are overburdened, and many other overburdened communities where huge warehouses are clustered, and my heart at least goes out to them. It's an issue of environmental justice. And I think that we, as retired individuals, are sharing in that burden of economic development. We have lived for, what? What is the length of Canal Walk, the length of life? Nearly 20 years, the warehouses, many were there. We live with them, we coexist with them. There are dozens of warehouses everywhere we go, whether we take Schoolhouse Road to go grocery shopping and shop right, whether we go through Weston Canal to take 287 to visit our families. No matter which way we turn, we are right behind, breathing the fumes of 18-wheelers, being stuck in traffic at the light on Cotton Tail and Weston Canal just to get on 287 to go to a doctor's appointment. We are living with them, we are coexisting. But my question to you is, how much is enough? How much is enough? And right now, we're faced with a humongous quarter of a million square foot warehouse that is going to be within an ounce-length distance from the backyard of some of our neighbors. Now, what kind of planning and what kind of nearsightedness, with all due respect, allows a huge residential community like ours, plus the one in Summerfields, to be 200 feet from a monster warehouse with 75 loading docks? 200 feet from a monster warehouse with 75 loading docks?
Sorry, that's your time.
Okay, thank you. One of our members, I forgot to mention, I'll be very brief, that we have founded the Citizens Warehouse Action Group, as you can see from our T-shirts. We're a new group, okay? But we don't plan to go away. So you're going to be seeing us here? You're going to see us at the planning board meeting, and the zoning board meeting, and the environmental commission meeting. We're not going anywhere. And guess what? We are senior citizens. We are retired, and we have all the time in the world.
Thank you. Ma'am, ma'am.
So, two questions.
Excuse me, ma'am.
I like that.
Time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Salomos, and I live at 7315 Minuteman Lane here in Somerset. I'm not here to talk about stop the warehouse, stop the warehouse sprawl. I'm here to talk about something even more important, okay? I'm here to talk about our youth and the future of our society, which is inextricably aligned with our youth and the education our youth get. I'm a per diem substitute certified for K-12 in the state of New Jersey, and I go to all the local schools, including Franklin Township, my favorite, okay? You see the signs all over, "We need subs, you need subs." We have the same problem in my church community. We don't have enough teachers. We have to merge Sunday School classes. So I was privileged to attend a thousand-person meeting, it was 500 priests, 500 Irish leaders from all over New Jersey, and I had the opportunity to address the whole audience. And up through this council, I want to address the, the audience here. The message I gave to a thousand people was, "Just like I told the kids yesterday, tell your parents, your grandparents, your aunts and your uncles, come into the Sunday School. We need you." So I'm entreating everyone in this room as well. Tell you yourselves, it's your kids, your kids, your grandkids. I, I'm not, I don't have my own, but when I'm in the school, I tell the kids, "You're mine," and I love them all. And when I tell them, "I wish I could take you home," one third-grade kid said, "I wish I, that'd be great." Neither of my parents want me anyway. And the stories are endless. Anybody that's an educator has heard this, so thank you for hearing me out. Come into the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If you wish to speak, just line right up.
Debbie Stewart to Farrington Plaza in Canal Walk. And I think Kiki wanted to ask somebody else's question, and she didn't have enough time. So in regard to the ordinance that I guess you'll be presenting later, warehouse ordinance, can I address that at this time?
Of course.
Okay. This gentleman asked, in regard to the current warehouse that is proposed on Metlers, will that be 500 to 1,000 feet away from the residential, should it actually be approved? Or is that too late for that particular project? The ordinance too late? And how do we foresee other projects in the future? I mean, last time, we were told, "Well, the application has already been put in, so it's too late." Well, how do we know? How do we preempt an application from coming in? What are the signs? What are we looking for? We really don't know.
You want to answer now, Mr. Healy could answer that. But it'll take up the rest of your time, I'm sure.
I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Mr. Healy is the township planner.
So, I think the first question was with respect to the application that's already been submitted. The application, again, is on file. It will be, have to be deemed complete within 45 days of their latest submittal. In all likelihood, it's going to be deemed complete before the ordinance is in effect. The, the purpose of tonight is to introduce the ordinance. It doesn't become in effect until after the second reading. There's notice requirements, everybody within, within the zone and within 200 feet need to be noticed. Then there's the second hearing, second reading, and then there's a timeframe after that, that it actually becomes effective. So, I, I'm not sure of any timing where that ordinance or that warehouse will be follow after the ordinance is in effect. Second question was, how do we know? I, I think the way to answer that is, after this ordinance becomes in effect, and, and when I do my presentation, I'll, I'll do a brief presentation in a little bit. Future warehouses, I mean, one of the main things is, in this proposed ordinance, is that no warehouses would be permitted within 500 feet of a residential zone. I don't want to get into my presentation, but the main part of, of, or the main gist, if you will, of my presentation is that this is the first step. The council, I directed staff to come up with an ordinance to address this in a timely manner. This is what this ordinance does. I anticipate that that's going to be future planning, some sessions before the planning board to fine-tune the ordinance. But that's, this is, again, I, I'll go into it in a little bit, but 500 feet from a residential zone and a number of other things in this ordinance that are in, the intent of which is to protect residential zones when they're in proximity to the business and industry zone.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to, I think it's important here, and, and this will obviously also be part of Mr. Healy's presentation later, is that when he says five, a warehouse is, can only be built more than 500 feet, what, what really that ordinance calls for is that a residential zone line, a, the parcel on which a warehouse can be built must be more than 500 feet away from that residential zone. Not the physical warehouse itself, but the land upon which it is built. So it, it has to be, so the, the building itself would be more than 500 feet away from that residential zone line because there are mandatory setbacks on a parcel for a building to be built, whether it's a house or a warehouse, it doesn't matter. So that, that's one thing that it's, it's, the building itself, the physical building, would be more than 500 feet from that residential zone line. Mr. Healy will expand on that later.
Hello, my name is Barbara Burns. I live at 79 Haverhill Place in Somerset. And I told my husband I was never, not going to speak tonight. But I, because of tap into New Jersey, I, I've learned recently about these issues. We've lived in this town for 22 years, and we're retired, and we love this town. And we could have moved to Stillwater, Delaware Water Gap, we loved hiking and everything, but we chose to stay here because we love this town and everything that it offers. All the retirement communities are in this proposed warehouse area. We've seen them all grown up and be built before our very eyes, you know? There were so many fewer people in, in Franklin when we first moved here, but now there's many more. But, but why? Because people want to retire here. It's convenient, and, and they love the biking and hiking and the Delaware Canal and everything. So warehouses, I would like to know if there are lawyers that can help people who do not want the warehouses, who stands to profit from warehouses? I mean, a, a retirement community and warehouses don't seem to go together. I mean, only because 287 is there as a major road, I can see that. But for any other reason, I don't know why any town planner would, would, for what reason would you want to put warehouses in farmland, country, beautiful, God's country? You know, why would the town want to do that? I mean, we were here for the tofu factory fight. If you remember Tofu Factory Fight, we were here for that one too. But some, somebody must be wanting these for some financial reason. I don't know who it is. I don't know who stands to profit from it, but I would like to stop it. Is it possible to stop any of them now? I mean, that's my question. Can we stop any of them? That's my question. And, and that's it. I just had to say that. Thank you. We love this town.
So, when I took this job, I took an oath, but I took a separate oath to myself, and that was to tell the truth. That when I was at Canal Walk, I did tell the truth. The, let me see if I can get your questions right. One of the issues that I, I spent a lot of time with, and I put up a graphic, you're asking, it's a good question, why are, do we have senior communities next to the, what's now called the BI zone, where you can build warehouses? That was done in 1997, and what was, what happened was, essentially what was the BI zone, a hunk of that was taken out, and, and you two pulled, pulled the rug out on me if I'm, if I'm wrong, because you guys know the history better than I. But basically, they took a chunk of that out, and they created the SCV zone, which is the senior community zones. So that was plopped in there, and everyone thought it was great, senior communities, no kids in school, more taxes, and that was terrific, until that unfortunately, inevitably, the two groups grew together. And until recently, what is, what the, the property that the warehouse is going to go on was going to be, there were several different versions of assisted living concepts going there. And unfortunately, that fell through, likely due to COVID, and at the same time warehouses became important. That, it wasn't like you turned off a switch and assisted living went away because of COVID, and then there was a gap of time, and then flipped another switch and warehouses came along. Those things kind of passed in the night, and they happened at about the same time. And unfortunately, this is what we're left with. But I agree, it was a bad decision made in late 97, early 98. They should have put a buffer in then, and we're paying the price for it now. To answer, Mr. Healy answered your questions in a very technical way, but I'll give you, you know, again, I swore I would tell the truth. To give you the, the answer, the true answer, it is very unlikely that anything would happen, that the current warehouse project that you all know about will be covered by the new ordinances. There's a law, my time's up?
Yep.
There's a law that basically, there's once, once an application is accepted, by accepted, I mean it's complete, it's deemed complete, they put in a complete application, then you can't change the law on them. That would, it's kind of like if someone commits what you think is a crime, you can't suddenly, but it's not a crime, you can't make it a crime afterwards, ex post facto. I think I've answered those questions, basically. What we're doing tonight with the ordinance we're passing, and this is a first step, and I hope you stand, stay around for Mr. Healy's presentation, is we're trying to prevent this from happening in other places. And we're going to, and by other places, I mean another part of Metler Road, right across from the, a nearby place in Canal Walk. So we're, we are working on it, we're working diligently. This is for government, this is lightning speed. I mean, the Metler Road project, or weight limit, we introduced at the very first meeting after I was at Canal Walk, and we're now passing it, well, I'm assuming we're going to pass it. And we're introducing the, what will, hopefully will be an ordinance that will restrict further warehousing near residences. So please stick around. I'll move, I'll ask council to change the order of the agenda a little bit, to make it a little sooner than it is on the agenda, but stick around to hear what, what we're trying to do. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Barbara Kane. I live at 32 Republic Row. I have, I spent at least 10 years on planning board in another district, another town. I do know that projects can come to a board, to a planning board, and changes can be made. They can be decreased in size, or because of things that Canal Walk is doing, requirements could be such that might have been missed, and it, I don't think it's fair to say it's a done deal yet. I also do believe that should this project go in, my property value goes down, which means then my taxes should go down.
They will.
All right, but.
So I have to be careful with the "go down."
Yeah, well, they, there is no way I can pay what I'm paying now with the environment that my house will be in. So I think that you will be losing tax funds.
Anyone else? If people wish to speak, if you could line up, that would be great.
My name is Mark Liebowitz. I live at 7305 Minuteman Lane. I was the former chief financial officer of a large international engineering firm. Now, I've only been here for 14 months. I moved from Long Island because my grandkids and my two daughters chose to live in Maplewood. And when I looked for a senior development between Maplewood and here, the only place was Florham Park. Very frankly, I would have moved to Florham Park, but there was nothing going to be available for about a year or so. Now, I understand the economics, I understand about the trade-offs with a warehouse, so I have to ask a couple of questions, and if I'm out of order, please tell me, but it's important for me to know. First thing is, there have been rumors that this development that's coming in paid close to $3 million to two homes, so they'd be able to move in, okay? Are you aware of that? And what, what are your feelings about that? The second thing is, if I'm out of order, tell me, what kind of taxes are these places, these people are going to pay? What kind of tax abatements have been granted to these people? Not only here, not only here. And I would like to have it honestly in writing, because no one remembers, with due respect, what happened 20 years ago. Very frankly, I didn't even know what the agenda was tonight. You say it's Article 12A or whatever it is. I just heard there was a meeting here. Okay, I've been on that side as a board of directors. Usually you have an agenda that's handed out with the itinerary. Well, I don't know where it is. This meeting started, no one told anybody about any of this. Now, I ran the meeting for a board of directors, before the meeting started, the agenda's over there, everyone goes to it. Does anyone take ownership on your side to do that?
I'll take ownership.
You take ownership, okay. What about the tax abatement? What, what has been arrangements to?
Not a penny. Not a penny.
Tax abatement's not legal in New Jersey. All these warehouses in this area.
Not a single penny.
Not a penny.
You can only, there's something called a pilot payment in lieu of taxes, that's only done in correctly. So those are areas in need of redevelopment, and so far, we've only given those to low-cost housing.
Okay.
And, and areas nowhere near you.
What's your view about this rumor that I, I believe is substantially true, that to make this thing work, this corporation, I've been on that side, paid $3 million to two rundown houses so that?
Actually, it was more, to be perfectly honest with it. So there are two properties outside. If you want the answer, I'll give you the answer. The answer is, there are two properties that are immediately adjacent to the larger piece of property at the corner of, of Metlers and Schoolhouse. They face Schoolhouse Road. The houses are there, it's pretty relevant that, it's apparent to anyone who drives by them that they're no longer occupied, and those two pieces of property matter public record. I believe they paid a total of $4 million for the two pieces of property. That didn't make those, their property able to be developed, their property was already able to be developed, it made it a little bit bigger. That's the point.
A little bit, little bit bigger. Those houses are in the middle of the street, sir.
Those, those houses are immediately adjacent, they were owned by.
They're in the middle of the development that's being planned now. They're not.
It's not in the middle of the development, it's on the outside edge of their property. They are adjacent to the property, it gives them additional property along Schoolhouse Road. That, and that's it.
Okay, so your feeling is? Okay, so your feeling is, big companies can come in...
It's four acres in total.
My turn. So your feeling is, big companies can come in here and pay $3 or $4 million, okay? We're not aware of what was going on. I mean, I'm here 14 months, I'm sorry, I'm a newcomer. But I'm not used to business being done this way, to have this kind of plan of the map that is very close to development. Isn't there a need to share with other people much earlier in the stages? You said in 1997, things were passed, okay? I don't know that, and it doesn't matter much. But if you were planning this particular development, this development, two or three years ago, you people had an obligation, a moral obligation...
I think that you're confused, that you think that we're, we're the ones that are planning this development. So there's two things, two things that you need to know. First, the, what the mayor said was, the ordinance that permits this warehousing development has been in place since 1997. So that means, right, that means that it was there at the time that Canal Walk was built. So everybody who bought Canal Walk got a disclosure from their builder that showed the surrounding properties, and showed what they could, what they were zoned for. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, we don't have, we're, when private property owners sell to somebody else privately, they're not required to get it. When you, if you decide, when you bought your house, the person who sold you your house wasn't required to tell us they were selling that house to you.
Correct.
So those two people sold that, they, that's a private real estate transaction, and the only reason we know what the value is, is because at some point in time, that document gets recorded with the county clerk's office, it becomes a matter of public record. But prior to that, we're not required to be told that somebody is, no more than we were required when you bought your house.
I accept it.
So the answer is, is if you think that for some reason, the council planned this development, the answer to that question is, that's absolutely not, not the case. We know about it when an application gets filed.
All right, thank you for your education, I appreciate that. Seriously, I mean that. However...
I'll give you one more minute. You're actually out of time, but they spoke over you, so...
However, okay, surely, this committee knew at some point, I can't believe, informally, even though it was going on, through this process...
There's no reason for a real estate developer to tell us in advance what they're planning or not planning. When you say informally knew, didn't know, the answer is, that's absolutely not true. Those are private real estate transactions, and what's in the mind of every property owner here, no more, once again, did we know that than we knew that the person who was selling to you was going to sell. We had no idea that, that's a private decision. So the answer is, is if your assumption here, in which you're going to lay some blame here at this council, is that they should have known three years ago that this was going to happen, that's just not true. Now, I would tell you if it was, and these, these guys, the staff will tell you when people came in, but the answer is, is applicants come and file, the zoning hasn't been in place since 1997, so...
For sure.
So we knew, like you knew, what the zoning was there, right? We, we know that because, because there's a zoning map. You know it, or your predecessor entitled knew it, because there's a map that's next to it, once again. But we don't know when somebody is actually going to file an application, we just don't have any idea. And as the mayor said, prior to there being a warehouse boom, there was, there's a booming assisted living facility. So, so when it switched from one to the other is a function of the...
I accept it. The only thing I will conclude with...
Last point.
Okay. I expect more of public officials. You guys study the information that's available. Do you think the layman looks at something from 1997, or goes over things like that? No. I, we look to people like you to better inform the communities. I understand it didn't happen in the last year or two, but I'm sorry. I've been, I've been on your side, and I know the, the moral obligation to a community. I appreciate you listening to me, thank you very much.
I just want to make one correction. In 1997, they changed a portion of the area where they could, where you could build warehouses to a area where you could build residences. This has probably been zoned for warehouses since the 60s?
So actually, so the area that we're in question here was identified in the 1958 master plan, when Route 287 was being proposed to be built as the area of the township to be developed with industrial and commercial development. It's remained in that industrial and commercial zoning, or various names, as zoning, zones have had different name changes. But it was certainly in what was then called the M1 Zone, which was the area to develop as industrial and warehouse from the 1970s in that zone. And as the mayor said, the commercial zone change that took place in what is the northwest quadrant of the township was to change what became Canal Walk into the Senior Citizen Village Zone, and to change what was to originally be another Senior Citizen Village across the street, that ultimately, due to state law, was allowed to be built as market homes in what is now Summerfields. All of that area was, in fact, commercially zoned up until 1997.
So on the 315 acres that is now Canal Walk, that was wooded land, and a sod farm is now Canal Walk, but used to be zoned to build warehouses. So you, you knew, your development was put in to a warehouse area in 1997, but it's been zoned for warehouses since the late 50s? Yes, sir?
Good evening, my name is Edward Lerner, 6th Constitution Way in Canal Walk. Can you tell me what the current zoning is for the two large fields on the western edge of Schoolhouse Road and the corner of Weston Canal Road?
It's in the agricultural zone.
So that means that there is no building allowed on those two fields, correct?
Six-acre minimum residential and anything farm-related. There's, there's a, there's a very limited number of permitted uses in the agricultural zone.
So in those two particular fields, there is no commercial development allowed as of now under zoning?
That's correct.
You have to, again, I want to be very careful with that. It's not zoned for that. Anyone can put in an application to the zoning board and apply for it. I think they'd be hard-pressed to get an approval, but they could try.
Has anybody put in an application for that zoning change?
No.
To date?
No. No, in fact, it was recently, if I understand the area you're talking about correctly, it was SCV, so they could have put expanded Canal Walk there, and it was changed in 2019, roughly.
Eighteen, nineteen, yeah.
Through agricultural.
Okay, so to be clear, those two fields are currently zoned for agricultural.
That's correct.
Again, where, where described...
The western edge of, the western end of...
Color of fire property, mayor. The color of fire property at both ends of Schoolhouse Road at Weston Canal.
On both, the south and north side of Schoolhouse Road. They're both zoned agricultural, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if you stick around later, when, when Mr. Healy does the presentation on the introduction of the ordinance, I'll display a zone map that shows the Canal Walk and all of the surrounding zone areas.
My name is Jim Byrne, I live at 26 Bryant Court. I just want to make sure I got this straight, about the 200 to 500 feet. Now, I know you're going to vote on an ordinance, I think, for the first time tonight, to make it 500 feet. Has our builder completed the application? So we, are we going to be affected by that, or we're not going to be affected by that?
I mean, I think I could probably answer quickly to your, your quick question is, this ordinance introduction tonight, it is extremely unlikely that it will impact the development of the corner lot at Schoolhouse and Metlers as that application is complete. It's about to be deemed complete by staff that's reviewing it, and that means that it becomes what is officially referred to as an application for development. And that application for development will be deemed complete prior to the adoption of this ordinance, which, which, because it's a zoning change, this ordinance will go here, introduction, next goes to the planning board for review, and then comes back to the council at a, at a future meeting for adoption. So that is now, and someone mentioned, and, and we can talk a little bit later when Mr. Healy does his thing, but yes, you can go to a planning board meeting, and the public has input as to how that development is, is allowed to proceed. Not whether it is allowed to proceed or not, that's a function of the planning board, is if it is as-of-right development, then it's as-of-right development, and people can develop their land that way. But there are things like buffers and screening, and all of those things are a product of a hearing in front of the planning board. So that's that. This does not alter the ordinance that that development will be built under. It alters the development of future parcels as far as the planning board is concerned, and as far as what we call as-of-right. There's principal, uh, principal uses in a zone, there's conditional uses in a zone, there's accessory uses in a zone, and then there's prohibited uses in a zone. Warehouses now would fall into that conditional use. They would have to meet conditions, and one of them is, they would have to be built on a parcel that is at least 500 feet away from a residential zone line. That's, that's what it does.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor, seeing no one else coming forward to speak, motion, unless this lady was coming forward. Okay. I motion close the public portion of the meeting.
Second. Moved in seconded, all in favor of closing the public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, the public portion is closed. I'm in a bit of a quandary. I promised Deputy Commissioner Morano that whenever she came in, we would allow her to speak. But I've also got all of you that I want to hear the ordinance. Thank you, thank you Deputy Commissioner. So I'm going to ask council if we could amend the agenda to go through the public hearing on second reading for the Metler Road change. That would put that, make that into law. And then we will go to, that would be item 12A. Agendas are over there, thank you for that correction. And then on 13, um, 13C and D are the ordinances that, one of them changes the zoning, and the other one changes weight restrictions on Weston and Weston Canal Road. So, um...
I would motion to change it according to what the mayor just described.
Second. Moving seconded, all in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, so we are now on to, I'm going to get lost by the end of the night. We're now on to public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading, ordinance 4368-22, this is 12A. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset State and in Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 226, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 226-17, Vehicles Over Designated Weight Exclusion, Excluded From Certain Streets. Metlers Road is presented to the public for a public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. So I have a motion to open to the public.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. So this, anyone wishing to speak can speak on this ordinance only, on whether, on the making of Metler Road limited to 4,000, uh, 4 tons. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. Yes, name and address, please.
Debbie Stewart...
It'll pull it down, it'll go down easy.
Debbie Stewart, 2 Farrington Plaza. Okay, so I think that is great, that you're putting this limit on. As residents, or if I'm driving along the road, and I see a tractor trailer, what do I do? And I call something, and I pull over in danger. I try to call the police, and the guy is gone, the police says, oh, well, he's gone. So what really, the reality, what is this going to do for us? Better than nothing, I get it.
I'll address that, because I have a little bit of experience in that, because I used to enforce that, because I was a police officer. So obviously, police officers can't be everywhere at all times. When it, when roads become an issue, when, when there are frequent complaints, then there's, then there's directed patrols and directed enforcement details from the police department. The Traffic Safety Bureau will come out and do selective enforcement on a particular road for a particular reason. Could be speeding, could be parking, could be overweight trucks, there's, you know, there's a number of different reasons. In this particular case, what will, what will ultimately happen here is there's a network of roads that are around Canal Walk, so, and they're, and just so you understand, Schoolhouse Road already does have a 4-ton weight limit on it. It has had a 4-ton weight limit on it for as long as I've worked here. 1985 is when I started. Schoolhouse Road looked far different than what it looks like today, but it had a weight limit on it. The signs, for whatever reason, were taken down, whether it was by a developer, builder, whatever it was. There are markouts called out for those signs to be replaced. That actual 4-ton weight limit runs from Randolph Road down to Weston Canal Road. Weston Road will have a weight limit from Elizabeth Avenue. Weston Road changes its name at the bend, turns into Weston Canal Road there. That's the municipal portion. So Weston Road will have a 4-ton weight limit based on an introduced ordinance tonight, as well as Weston Canal, from that bend out to the Mayville Causeway. So really, it creates that circle around, other than the county portion of Weston Canal Road, which is kind of irrelevant to truck traffic. The police department will need to pay particular attention to it. And in, and because, in general, the warehouses in that area that might use it, or the businesses that might use it, will have to be communicated with them and told, your trucks can't use these roads. Now, one of the things that everyone needs to understand is that just because a road has a 4-ton weight limit on it, does, that doesn't mean that there will never be trucks on those roads. For instance, there's a business on Metlers Road, across from the now Charter School, that will get deliveries, and, and will have to have trucks coming in and out. You can't prohibit trucks from making local deliveries and pickups. So, and if there's a warehouse or a business within that zone, those trucks will still be able to drive on those roads to get in and out of the business that is on that road. We have that condition in several places in town, where there's a trucking company on a, on a road that has a weight limit. So obviously, trucks go in and out. But you need to just, if you see the truck traffic, you need to contact the police department and report that there are trucks traveling on whatever road it is, Metlers or Schoolhouse or Weston, whatever one the observation is made of. And the police department will go out and do the enforcement. And, and as this goes on, the hope is that the regular truck traffic is reduced significantly, not eliminated, because there will still be trucks going to businesses that they have a right to go to.
Next time, thank you.
Would it be possible on Metlers...
Your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Nirmal Shah, 9th Congress Court, Canal Walk. Would it be possible on Metlers to put cameras? So I mean, you know, so that if the trucks are going, you can take a picture?
Camera enforcement in the state of New Jersey is not permitted.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Shirley Tallman, and coincidentally, I live at 57 Tallman Lane.
I knew you were going to say that.
Which is in Canal Walk. And with all due respect, Township Manager, you can't control traffic now at Metlers and Weston. My home backs up, Canal Walk's side of the burn. Speeding trucks that get caught on the turn, because they shouldn't be there in the first place, and have to be towed out. It's not my job to be your police officer, but I do call, because I'm tired of hearing this during the night, and sometimes even preparing dinner during the evening. You can't control it now. So please, don't give that impression that you will be controlling semis. If they, if they fall behind on their time schedules, or innocently get lost, which happens, they're going to end up there. We know, not because of, because of a semi... We know, not because of, because of a semi, but we know that a woman has been killed because of a traffic incident on Weston Canal Road in the last, I think, what, 10 years?
I'm, I'm, so, I, I don't know which, I don't know which one you refer to.
She was hit by a driver from the Montgomery area who came too close to her on her bicycle and killed her. And I don't wanna see any semis on that road because I have to occasionally drive down there, and I don't want my safety to be put at any greater risk. So all I'm saying to you is that I don't think that you're gonna be able to monitor or to stop it. You're depending on us to be your police people. And then the alternative is raise our taxes and hire more policemen. I think that's where this whole thing is going, because we already have problems on Randolph. We talked about that at your last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Right? We have tractor trailers that are idling there against the rules of the road there.
And, and...
And, and didn't you say, Mayor, that we should call the police when that happens?
Absolutely. I wish...
Now, you know what? It's not so easy to just dial the number and get in, 'cause I've done it a number of times.
If you call 873-2300.
All, all I'm asking for as my, as my post... I made this today, so I wanna show it to you. I'm just asking for good government, and good government protects our environment, and believe me, our environment is not gonna be protected when that warehouse goes up, and you know it. What else does good government do? It protects our quality of life, and that is not happening here. There will be a reelection, and I will remember this.
Thank you. This is Jim Salomos again, 73 15 minute man lane. I, I wanna put a good word in for our local police department because I have no problem when I see a truck idling on Randolph and he's impeding traffic. My view of life is if you see something, say something, and our local police, they welcome the call. I have no, and every time I've called, they feel the call, and I, you know, and I take the liberty of asking for the watch commander because the, the person that answers the phone is typically is not a police officer. Whenever asked for the watch commander, the officer takes that call and they attend to it. So what I'm suggesting is two things. The police, they do a great job, they're there to take the call, they welcome the call, and they respond to the call. So it's, it's incumbent upon us, if you see something, it's not that hard to pick up the phone, and call, make the call. You don't have to call 911. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Mayor, seeing no one else come forward, I move that we close the public session for this ordinance.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public portion on this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do you have a motion on the item?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, so the discussion is pretty straightforward, limiting Mettler's Road to four tons. Any other discussion?
Just, Manager, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanna add that, uh, I mean, there's a few comments made, and I think all of them. A, yes, you see something, call in. Unless it's an imminent danger, don't call the emergency number, but that, that is good advice. On the other hand, we can get incredibly proactive with an information campaign, communication campaign, to all of the businesses that are likely to have trucks coming and going so that, you know, we can't tell them what to do, but we can feed them information and implore them to please make this known, widespread, so we can do something on our end. Uh, we can go above and beyond, 'cause legally, you don't have to do that every time a law is passed, weight restriction, speed limit, et cetera. There's no law. But when something is, can affect this many people and there's this many trucks involved, we could be proactive, and that's up for, well, staff comes up with their own ways, and counsel can, can give them information or directives on how we'd like that communication to happen. But it's, it's a, it's a joint effort, and I hope we can all make it a serious effort so that this law has as much teeth as possible. So the only trucks you're gonna see are the ones that Mr. Verlacher correctly referred to, which have a right to go make a local delivery. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Odi Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
So that is now law in 20 days, it takes 20 days for...
20 days.
20 days following publication, so on August 1st or so, if you see it, call it in. I hear what you're saying, that you're not our police, but I, I disagree. I think citizens should be part of this. I call the police multiple times a month when I see something, and I don't say, I'm the mayor, do this, I just report something and they take care of it. So, um, you see a truck on there, call, and we can monitor the number of calls, and that can help, uh, help us know how many, how much more often that a police car needs to be there. So help us help you, and we are trying our best. And now we're on to item number, uh, 13, so that, that was a second reading. So there's a first reading and a second reading. On first readings, essentially, we are announcing to the world that we are going to consider an ordinance to pass usually two weeks later. There's, there's reasons that that can be longer, I'll explain that as we come to it. And the second reading, which we just went through, is one where we actually pass or don't pass the ordinance. It's only on second readings that the public has the opportunity to speak. So we're now gonna do first readings, uh, on item 13, C and D, I think.
Correct.
Okay, so ordinance number 437122, ordinance, an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset, State and New Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 112 of Development, intended primarily to address, uh, the development of warehouses in the business and inter, and industry zone, business and industry zone, BI zone, and to make associated amendments to the land development ordinance. The foregoing ordinances presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing, and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. So the reason why this is not just two weeks later is this is a zoning change, it goes to the planning board, and then it comes back to us, so it takes a little more than two weeks to do that, 'cause we don't want unintended consequences, as we see, have seen it happen here. That's why we have the planning board look at it and see if they can see anything that we haven't noticed. So do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, for discussion, Dr. Healy. You can address the public if you wish, you don't have...
Sure. Change this around?
Just, just...
I may just end up picking up the mic and I'll, I'll probably go up to the debate. So again, the ordinance has really four main components, or four more significant issues, and then a number of, I'll call them housekeeping or other things to further protect the public. Uh, the first major issue that's in this ordinance, again, as we've discussed it a number of times, warehouses are permitted throughout the business and industry zone. This ordinance is, would propose to change warehouse and distribution uses from a principal permitted use to a conditional use, and what that means is in order for somebody to build within a warehouse in the business and industry zone, they cannot build on a piece of property within 500 feet of a residential zone. So that's gonna be one of the main conditions. The second condition is it has to be on public water and sewer. So that's, again, that's the, the first main thing, and then we have a number of rezonings that are proposed, and I'm gonna go up to the map to show some of these. So to orient everybody, it's on the map, but again, Schoolhouse Road runs in a east-west direction. This is Mettler's, this is Weston, again, in east, east-west direction. This is the, um, property that has caused the concern and that has been discussed tonight. Two of the rezonings are, the properties involved are shown on this map. This property right here, which is on the northeast corner of Weston and Mettler's, is zoned research, office, laboratory. Uh, that zone actually does not permit warehousing, but it does permit relatively large-scale commercial development. O stands for, R stands for research, O stands for office, L stands for laboratory. Due to the size of the property, I think it's, well, it's, it's large, I don't remember the... Yes, I didn't want to cite a wrong number. 60-acre property, that can result in a lot of development. This is, um, and I think everybody can understand from, uh, we've driven Mettler's and Weston, those are roads that are not suitable and conducive to large-scale, uh, to heavy traffic, whether it's, uh, cars or trucks. Uh, this property is also not connected to public sewer, so for that reason, it's really not conducive or appropriate for intensive development. So the ordinance would change the zoning of this property to the RR3, which is the residential zoning that basically surrounds it on two sides. RR3, the 3 stands for three acres. So it's a residential, low density residential zone, each house on three acres. Similar area to the south of Weston, along Mettler's, uh, this has been developed partially. Uh, there's a, uh, former industrial building that's been converted to a school. Uh, on the east side, across the street, is a, a research facility, but then the northernly portion, um, I'm guessing between 10 and 20 acres, is undeveloped for basically the same reasons that I discussed a few minutes ago for this property. On Mettler's, accessed by roads that really aren't suitable for intensive traffic, is not on gravity sewer. This area is proposed to be rezoned, again, similar to this. This area is zoned A, so as discussed previously, that's a low-density residential zone, one house for every six acres. So this is proposed to be rezoned to the A-zone. Uh, just to, uh, step back a little bit, we were discussing these properties back here, a gentleman asked about these properties. Indeed, that was rezoned, uh, within the last two or three years. There was, as the mayor stated correctly, wasn't a sewer citizen village zone, as were these properties, and there was another property on Mettler's that about two or three years ago, the council rezoned those properties to the A-zone. So it's basically a similar change that is proposed in this ordinance. Bob, can you scroll to, um, Elizabeth? So this, uh, can to orient everybody, this is New Brunswick Road, which turns into Schoolhouse Road. This is Elizabeth. Uh, this is where some, this is the, the shop right and some of the retail over in here. This is Somerset Run. This area of south, this corridor of Elizabeth, south of Schoolhouse, um, and New Brunswick, is also in the BI zone. Uh, that area is, it, we have had a few, uh, proposals in that area. It's predominantly still not developed with warehousing, although it is zoned for warehousing currently. It is not in a sewer service area, and it is heavily constrained by, uh, environmental features, including wetlands. So the proposal in this ordinance is to rezone the entirety of this area on the east side, which again adjoins Somerset Run, as well as the properties, this is the high school, um, the properties on the west side, uh, all to the RR40 zone, which is the residential zone that adjoins it to the south. Uh, and that is a, uh, RR40 stands for 40,000 square feet, so it's single-family, essentially one-acre zoning. The one piece of land that's not proposed is this piece of property here that fronts on Schoolhouse, it's partially developed, access to it would be from Schoolhouse and doesn't adjoin residences, so we're proposing to keep this property within the BI zone. Um, so those are the main, um, actions. And then there's a number of additional changes. This mostly pertains to things such as setbacks, buffering, uh, building height, et cetera. So for example, the, um, currently the ordinance, if there is a property that abuts, a residentially zoned property that abuts, uh, a property in the BI zone, the, uh, set, building setback goes from the, um, the setback of the zones, or for example, the standard rear setback in the BI zone is 40 feet. If it happens to adjoin a property in a residential zone, it goes up to 100 feet. Um, although there are some exceptions. So if you're across the street, you don't have that same protection currently. We're taking that out. So even properties that are across the street in a residential zone, you have a BI zone across the street, unless it's 287, that additional setback is going to apply. Um, there's basically, there's similar, uh, exceptions in the ordinance for buffering, taking that out. If, 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 if you were, uh, across the street from, from a, so this may apply to some of the properties that, um, are closer to 287 on Randolph. You know, they, they, um, they're currently developed, if they're going to expand, they're gonna have to apply, uh, or comply, I'm sorry, with the now 100-foot setback, where now it's only 50 feet. Building height, uh, when the township combined, uh, a few years ago, created the BI zone by basically combining the former M1 and M2 zones, um, we basically took the higher of the, um, permitted building height, so currently in the BI zone, it's 65 feet is permitted. We're scaling that back down to 50, um, and there's gonna be, uh, so that's, there's some language to basically grandfather in some of the existing office buildings, um, that again aren't, that are on Atrium Drive, et cetera. So those existing buildings would be grandfathered. Otherwise, again, it's going to be 50 feet. And then lastly, there is, uh, we have currently in the ordinance, and we added this when we did the BI zone, uh, there are a number of design standards in the ordinance that speak to, um, screening and lighting and building design, things of that nature. Those are already in the ordinance, we're adding some additional, one being, um, anti-idling signage, uh, and measures, and, um, making sure that the buildings are solar-ready. And those are things that the developer will have to prove at the time of site plan approval when they go before the board. So that in a nutshell is the proposed ordinance. Again, I think, as I stated before, uh, staff was directed to, uh, in a, in a pretty timely way, put this ordinance together. Um, this is, uh, I, I believe this is the first step. As far as the planning board's involvement, it's really gonna be twofold. First, as you know, anytime an ordinance, a land use ordinance is proposed, it has to go to the planning board for their official review. They're gonna be, first, they're gonna be reviewing this ordinance within the next few weeks, and records, you know, making, opining whether it's consistent with the master plan or not, or if they wanna make some adjustments, they can, they can make those recommendations. After that, and after this ordinance is, is adopted, if it's adopted, the planning board's going to be asked to review this matter even further. There may be additional tweaks to this, there may be additional improvements to it that could, could further and better address this issue. So it's my understanding that there's going to be, again, another process after this ordinance, this addition, this initial ordinance is put into place.
Any questions for Mr. Healy?
Hi, I just, oh, go ahead. Um, so thank you for going through that. I think, uh, my, my question is, uh, I guess, I'm going to be a throughway, uh, for some of the folks that made comments, um, and just to make sure that everyone here kind of understands what you just walked through, so I just wanted to, to, if you'll indulge me, um, did everyone, like, just by a show of hands, did you understand what he just said in terms of what this ordinance will do? No, but I can ask him. That's what I'm asking, so did you understand? So...
I understand.
Not, not to make you have to go through that again, but I guess just more approachable?
Okay.
What this, what this will do, so we don't have repeat questions, I guess, when we come back to do the second reading, so...
Let me take a stab at it. The biggest thing it does is, a warehouse cannot be closer than 500 feet to a residential zone. So that's not 500 feet, it's, it's windows being 500 feet from your windows, it's how far you are back from the edge of the residential zone and how far back... back the building is from the edge of residential zone. The piece of property can't be any closer, so if they, they don't, they can't build right on the edge of the property, and you're not built right on the edge of your property, so there's probably at least another hundred feet there, maybe more. But that, that's the biggest thing, is that it, while it allows the other industrial or business industrial uses there, the biggest thing is it moves those buildings back five hundred feet. And if, in the more rural areas, they can't put in their own septic system, it has to be in an area where they can connect a septic. So that will keep them out of rural areas. And we're not just talking here, this is, this affects the entire town. We're not going to let them be skyscrapers, we're going to limit them to fifty feet. And then we're going to do some things like require them to have, be solar-ready, which is actually also a state requirement to the building code. I think those are the biggest things. There's a few pieces of land, such as the land around Canal Walk, that is either going to be rezoned to three-acre residential or to agricultural. So, and now, with the exception of this, and I'll say it, horrible intrusion, I, I said it at the, at the Canal Walk meeting, I get where you're coming from, I would be doing exactly what you're doing if this were near my house, I completely understand that. The sleep I've lost over this is not because you're threatening to not vote for me. You can, you can do that, that's fine, my wife would be thrilled. But what, the sleep I've lost over this is two things. I, I feel your pain, and I've been racking my brain as to how to make this go away. And unfortunately, I can't make it go away, but the advice that you've heard here tonight, you, you can still try to make it go away, but really put your efforts towards making it not as bad, make it farther away from you, bigger berm, bigger trees, or more trees, or whatever, whatever things we can do. And these two gentlemen, I don't know if they're losing sleep, but they're spending an awful lot of the time we pay them to spend on doing, on thinking out those things. And I understand they're speaking to the developer, and the developer is open-minded.
Yeah, and I could, one of the women who spoke before, she said she was on a planning board in another town, what she said is true. The application that is currently proposed, while the use is permitted, and generally the scale, they're not seeking any variances, so that generally the scale of what they're doing is permitted. But there are, there can be ways that we can improve it. And the township, the staff, I met with our consulting engineer today, we are looking at ways to, to address these issues, if there's ways to shift the buildings further away from Metlers and Schoolhouse, if there's a way to change the grading so that there's, so we can preserve more of the existing trees along the roads. Are there things in our ordinances that we can use to their full effect? There are, again, buffering requirements in our ordinances, there are, there is a section, a portion of our ordinance, chapter 222, trees, that we can use to either have the developer save as many trees on the site as possible, if that's not possible, to replant them either on the site or maybe adjoining sites. So we are, right now, already looking at ways that we can modify this site plan to make it as, you know, to mitigate the impacts as much as possible. And we're involving our consulting engineer, we are going to be meeting with the applicants' professionals within the next few weeks to start that discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, for clarifying. And no disrespect, you're brilliant, but you're a talking planner, and I think...
Believe me, I try, it can be technical, I apologize.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you, and I hope that made it a little bit more clear for everyone with the zoning, and thank you Deputy Mayor, I think that was part of my question, because I felt that it was getting a little too technical with the wording. The question that I had is, we're changing quite a bit of zoning in that area, just roughly, approximate, how much are we changing from BI to, from BI, ROL to RR3A, RR40?
Approximately how many acres?
Probably in the neighborhood of about a hundred and forty.
I, I think that's pretty accurate, and then as far as the, along New Brunswick Road, it's probably the same order of magnitude.
Hundred and forty acres.
I mean, that's, that's approximate, we, we didn't do the measurement, but if, if that property on the northeast corner of Weston and Metlers is sixty acres, on the southerly side, it has to be at least that.
With, with some of it having already been developed, but nonetheless, being moved into an A-zone, and so while it is developed, and it is now a charter school, and it is still a, a research laboratory across the street, any future development by those owners would now be required to be, they would be required to apply for variances because they, while they're pre-existing non-conforming use now, because the zone has changed, they would still need variances to do any work, any additions to their buildings. So that is certainly still, while it's, the impact is less, it's still an impact on, on future development south of Weston Road, and obviously north of Weston Road and the former, what will now become the former ROL zone, will only be, by, by right, only be residential development. It could certainly, you know, we, we often talk about things like, you know, use variances. A use variance is something when someone goes to the Board of Adjustment, the zoning Board of Adjustment is, is kind of the Board of Denials, and the planning board is the Board of Approvals. I once had a land use attorney tell me that. And, and so when you, when you go in front of the Board of Adjustment, you're asking for permission to build something on a piece of property that's not permitted, you need a variance to do that. You could ask to build a one-hundred-story skyscraper on a ten-acre lot in the agricultural zone. By law, you're allowed to ask for it, and, and no reasonable Board of Adjustment would ever approve it, right? But just because we changed the zoning, and, and the mayor touched on this, doesn't mean that someone might not try to do something there anyway. That's what the Board of Adjustment is for, and so that could happen. I'm not saying, I, I don't know that it will, but it could.
And they don't get to just say willy-nilly yes or no. They have laws they have to follow, just like in a jury trial for a criminal offense. You may know in your heart that that guy is guilty, but if the judge says you have to ignore this piece of information because the police got it without a warrant, so just, you cannot use that in your, in your decision, then, then they have to follow that law, and there are certain laws that the zoning board has to follow. I was on the zoning board, Mr. Dominic, Mr. Dominic will laugh about this, I was on the zoning board, he sat there, I sat there, and I wanted to say no to everything, and he, he had to, for months, he had to instruct me in the law. And you just can't say no. I think we've diverged quite a bit.
So I think the one thing I wanted to add as well is, when we've had these larger ordinances that have affected a significant portion of the township, we, we have put together a list of frequently asked questions, so we're going to anticipate what some of those questions are going to be. I think there's certainly going to be questions from the public. There may also be questions from the people who own properties and who have existing warehouses or, or land in the BI-zone, they're going to have questions as well. So we're going to put together a list of frequently asked questions, we'll provide the link to that in a notice that goes out to the public, we'll put that on the township website, and we'll also put the phone number and email for township staff, so if people have questions in advance of the hearing, they can reach out to staff and maybe hopefully have some of their technical questions answered in advance. We find that that does smooth out the process and gets the public more educated on, on the ordinance that's before you, and we're going to do that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, a quick comment, I just want to make sure Councilman Nadeen, I know who had the floor prior, had any other questions.
Thank you, um, no, I think that's, I'm good for now, just one more thing. So a lot of the folks have reached out to me regarding zoning, rezoning, and I think all your questions just, well, majority of the questions just got answered, based on what you're seeing right now. This is your look-forward view, and I think most of you have asked for the look-forward view, and that will be circulated. Hopefully, in the next reading, you pass this and it goes through.
So, sir, your opportunity to ask questions will be during the public hearing portion of an ordinance adoption. This is the first meeting, it's the introduction, as the mayor had said earlier, is to announce to the public that the Township Council intends to pursue this ordinance amendment, and a scheduled public hearing has already been announced as to when, and at that time, just like there was an opportunity to ask questions for the weight restriction on, on Metlers Road, the same thing will happen with this ordinance at that public hearing date.
So I just wanted to make a quick comment. And originally, I think, and all these facts are important, I appreciate all the information that's just been disseminated, but I think the first question was how many people understood the basics of what this is. So I'm not trying to oversimplify, but basically it's saying you've got to build shorter warehouses, they're shorter in height, smaller in size because of the buffers, which means less impervious. And there's some, I think referred to a hundred and fifty acres, a hundred and forty acres, that simply you can't build anything. There's other parts of this, but that's the part I think some of you are interested in. It still allows for warehouses, but they should be smaller in size and more taken to account for what the border and the type of neighborhoods and usages around there. I can't take questions, and I just want to finish a comment, and then the mayor will take over the meeting.
It's good, but no.
Ma'am, ma'am?
So, the mayor wants the meeting, and so, please. So I'm going to say this, this is a great first step, I hope, I know I'll be working on it, I think most of my colleagues, because this should only be the first in many steps. And somebody asked before, somebody asked before about what you can do as a group. You're not obliged to, but any group, whether it's one person or a large group like this, if you ever have concerns that you're getting a fair shake at a planning board meeting, especially as a project is decided, not if it can be built, but how it can be built, I suggest from what I've seen in this town over decades, whenever possible, hire the best lawyer, the best experts, because developers have deep pockets, and they hire a lot of professionals to come in to try to get whatever project they want passed, which usually is based on the maximum profit they'll make, not based on any concerns of your quality of life. So when possible, do that, you don't have to, you can go up and speak on your own, you can do research on your own, but that is another option available, so when it is in front of a planning board, you have some of the tools and resources that developers have to somewhat level the playing field. That's my personal opinion, that's not a policy, and that's not a requirement, so. Unfortunately, that's what we're up against, we'll keep working our end, and your planning board meetings is to where this project will be vetted as if, assuming it moves forward.
Ms. Francois?
Thank you.
So I have a question. When will the public hearing and adoption of the ordinance on the second reading be? What date will that be, so these people know that they can come back and ask questions?
That's September thirteenth, but another question is when will it be before the...
It's not, it's not scheduled yet, the planning board has forty-five days from the time that it's introduced. So, so it'll be, it'll be on the planning board agenda within the next month or two. It hasn't been scheduled because you haven't formally introduced it yet, so we haven't, we haven't put it on an agenda yet until you refer it to us at the planning board.
Unless there's more questions, I'd like to formally introduce it.
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
Before it's formally introduced, I want to understand what voting on. So as it was described, I taught high school chemistry for a long time, so I'm very visual, because you can't see molecules, you have to describe them. We have a circle, right, in the center of it, a donut hole, is Canal Walk. Around it, the donut you would eat, is the ability to build warehouses. In a few places already, the council on the north, northern side, made it agriculture, so you can't build warehouses. And what this will do for the donut hole is the lower, I guess it was southeastern portion would be not develop, develop for warehouses. So the, the donut is less warehouses around the donut hole, which is Canal Walk.
I, I think maybe the, the way that I'm thinking of it is, right now, on the, Bob, can you scroll down just a little?
We'll talk about it in donuts. That's what I want to know. Less, is there less of a donut when we're done? Donut being warehouse?
Not this way. There's, there's, with this ordinance, there'd be, there'd be more of, there'd be more of separation between the residential use, which is Canal Walk, and the business. Because you see the ROL, again, that's owned Research Office Lab, that would permit, under the zoning, a large-scale commercial development right across Metlers Road. It also would permit, right across Weston Road, a large-scale commercial development. That would change that to residential. So we would move away potential development for commercial development right across the street. And then as far as the five-hundred-foot separation requirement, so these are all, these are all residential zones. So all the properties, and this is all residential, some of these are already, as you know, warehouses, but, and if they were to expand, they'd have to go to the zoning board, makes it harder. But basically, all of these properties on this side of Randolph would be prohibited from warehousing. As you get over into here, the heart of Cotton Tail, now, this would still be permitted down Heller Park, et cetera, but right, again, within five-hundred-feet separation, you could not have additional warehouses, or if you were to expand, it would be harder because you'd have to go to the zoning board, and it's a much harder ask than going to the planning board, where again, it's, it's a permitted use.
Thank you.
So I, I don't...
I don't know how that relates to donuts.
I don't accept your donut analogy, that they are not surrounded by places you could build warehouses. Basically, the only place immediately adjacent to Cal Walk, Canal Walk, where you can build a warehouse after this, is the place that is currently under application.
That's correct.
We're covering every other, every other place as best we can, they can always go for an amendment, I mean, a zoning variance, but we're covering as best we can everywhere around Canal Walk.
Right, which would be...
And, and, and other places as well.
Right, and other places around the town.
And other places as well, because of that five-hundred-feet from a residential zone, places...
It's a donut of protection with unfortunately one bite taken out of it.
And the frosting is all of the other things we put in terms of buffering and setbacks, et cetera.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilmember Oney Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick?
Yes.
If they're being there for it?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nadeen?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright?
Don't sit down, Mr. Healy, we have one more, we have the Weston Canal Road, that's very, much more straightforward. So item thirteen D, ordinance number forty-three seventy-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklinstown, near Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly, chapter two twenty-six, vehicles and traffic, section twenty, two twenty-six to seventeen, vehicles over designated weight excluded from certain streets, Weston Road and Weston Canal Road municipal portion, the foregoing ordinances presented to Township Council for adoption on the first reading, posting and publication in accordance with the law in public hearing, and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Councils to be held on Tuesday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM. We have a motion to introduce.
Some moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, so very briefly, I don't think you even have to get up. What this is doing is making a four-ton weight restriction on the following road. If you were driving from Manville across the causeway, and you take a right, as soon as you take that right, you're on the municipal portion of Weston Road, and the four-ton weight limit begins then. You drive and you go around the big curve, you go into Metlers Lane, you cross Metlers Lane, you go on that windy road, and you wind up at Elizabeth Road, that distance from the end of the causeway to, to Elizabeth Road will be four-ton weight limit. That's, that's the purpose of this ordinance. That's the purpose of this ordinance. So any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
So that passes, the prior one passes, the Metler Road passes. We're doing what we can, and we're not stopping here. These two gentlemen, and Mr. Bornmacher, and the rest of council will be racking our brains and seeing how we can prevent more of this spread to places we don't want it. What I'd like to do now is, the agenda is in tatters, but I'd like to go to Deputy Director Murano for the Somerset, who is a Somerset County Commissioner, to talk about the DNR State Park, some good news.
Well, good evening to you, and I promise I'll try to accelerate this presentation because we have had a beautiful display of democracy in action, and I think we can all agree that we've seen democracy threatened lately. So it's actually a beautiful event to see it calmly and civilly discoursed. So congratulations to the public and to the council on that. Give them a round of applause. They deserve it. So I'm here tonight to just talk to you about the county's recovery from the pandemic in Franklin Township, and we're going to bring that full circle to the DNR Canal. If you look at the slides here, and let's go to the first one, we're going to talk about briefly how the pandemic impacted New Jersey and Somerset County. So 1,000 deaths in Somerset County from COVID-19. Three in 10 businesses closed, and 16.5% were jobless as of the April 20 peak. We had five central Jersey counties that lost $3.4 billion in tourism revenues. And I think you all can see that in Franklin Township on Davidson Avenue. You have a lot of hotels here, big impact. I see it as liaison to transportation as well. I see the ridership down on the Dash buses, that's the Davidson Avenue shuttle, so we all know that that is true. It's affecting us. At the county, we set a light, we know we have an issue here, we have ARP funding, how do we fix this, and where are we going? Our first priority was public health and the economic vulnerability. I'm not going to read through all of these slides because I know you've had a long meeting here tonight, but I think you all know the county's impact on getting people vaccinated. We were one of the top counties in the state for vaccination. So number one, go through the pandemic with health and safety, number one. Number two, we want to make sure people stay in their homes. We pressed hard on the emergency rental assistance program, and Somerset County distributed over $7.5 million in emergency rental assistance and added $1.5 million from our ARP money to help people, brought it to about $9 million we gave in emergency rental assistance. Out of that, Franklin Township, you guys got the most, at 2.8, in excess of $2.88 million. Of those, 736 residents were helped to stay in their homes. And of note, keep each there, only 1.7% of our ERAP funds were used for administrative costs. So we're very proud of that figure, getting people to stay in their homes. So we got people safe, we kept them in their homes. Now we've got to look to recovery, and we've got to look to our public in helping our children who were so negatively affected through this pandemic. We're very proud to announce we're taking our ARP monies, using it towards the Y MCA Summer Camp that will be held in Colonial Park here in Franklin Township. It's going to allow 200 campers for income contingent camp and providing jobs for our camp counselors there. We have a focus on families in Franklin, Manville, and Bound Brook. Please, I know you've seen these flyers that have been around, please circulate them, please let people know about this program. We're really proud of that. The long-term strategy here we're talking about is tourism. As we mentioned earlier, our tourism was negatively affected. Why was it negatively affected? Because most of our tourism came from business travel. Business travel's down, we all know that. It's not coming back real soon. I'm a salesperson by trade, I know I did my first business trip this past week. I used to fly out at least once a month. So it's going to happen, and we've got to figure out a better solution. We're taking that pivot, and we're looking at leisure tourism. How do we pivot from that business tourism and take it to a leisure tourism side? One of those things is really focusing on our state parks that are in this area, the DNR Canal and our state-owned historic assets that are here as well, like Rockingham. We believe at the county, and we have reached out to our legislative representatives within Somerset County, about taking state-owned, state ARP money and investing it towards their state-owned assets in our county, particularly these things, DNR Canal and our historic sites. There are groups now, Fix Our Parks is one of them, advocating for the same thing, encouraging the state that we need to invest in our state parks. Flipping to the next slide, New Jersey parks are in terrible shape, we need to invest in them. We have disrepair of the DNR Canal. Next slide. I think you all have seen it, we live by it. Flip this slide. DNR Parks, DNR Canal Park provides equitable access to outdoor recreation. One of the key elements of ARP money is equity, and we believe the DNR Canal is part of that equity. It affects 25 diverse municipalities. And in Somerset County, that includes Manville, Franklin, and the Bound Brooks. 64% of the 315,000 New Jerseians who live within a mile of the DNR Canal are non-white. So the DNR Canal checks that box for the state of inclusion as well. Next slide. We all know the 250th anniversary of our nation's birthday is coming up. We have key sites, three state-owned historic sites in Somerset County. The state themselves have found that Rockingham here in Franklin needs $8.3 million worth of work. The state itself said that the Wallace House and Old Dutch Parsonage in Somerville needs $8 million combined. So there's a need for historic sites there, and the tourism element for the 250th anniversary is expected to be high. We believe central Jersey exists. Key element there is Franklin, and we're advocating to that to our state representatives to create that designation of our state rather than the confusing sections that it has now, Gateway, Skylines, nobody even knows what those are. Flip the page. We're putting our money where our mouth is. We have launched the Sip and See campaign. It was just launched last week. We put our county ARP money into that. We're showcasing our five locations, one of them being here in Franklin Township, Cyclone Brewery, as well as other distilleries, breweries, cideries in the county. But what makes us a little different, and I didn't bring my passport with me, do you have one? You have a couple that you can share to the council members, is that okay if Brad brings that up? Part of that is not just the sip part, but the see. And we're really pushing with QR codes so that when people go to the sip portion, they sit down and they look at other things that they can find along that trail. So obviously, Cyclone Brewery is going to have things that are right there in Franklin Township, including the DNR Canal. Next slide. Here's where we're going to come with my ask to you. We're looking for your help as a municipality. As I said, we have met with the governor's office, we have met with our state legislators and senators and assembly people, and we're doing a roadshow to meet with our municipalities, especially those that touch the canal. We're asking for your help in this effort to advocate for the DNR Canal and our state historic sites. We're asking you to reach out to these folks and remind them of why these things are necessary, and to ask for their state ARP money to be dedicated to improvements to these valuable Let me just make sure I didn't miss anything here. Why are we doing this? Because we're helping to improve our local infrastructure for tourism, which is getting our economic development back in action. We're also looking to launch a bike share program, and we've seen certain key locations within Franklin Township that would be ideal for this. So here's our asks, and we're going to, the last slide here, because I know you guys are exhausted, and I'm trying to really accelerate this presentation. We are asking you, number one, we will provide it. We're trying to make everything as easy for you guys and turnkey as possible, because I know you have a lot of other things on your place, like warehouse, rezoning, and whatnot, so. We'll provide model resolutions for the governing body to consider passing and sending to the governor and the legislature for these items. We will provide a model letter to send to the Tourism Division with CCs to your legislative delegation and governor. We would like all respective staff, and I have two of them here tonight with me, to work together on tourism readiness and implementation of our new preservation plan that was just passed. And lastly, you may wish to engage your Economic Development Committee and Hotels in developing a leisure tourism strategy in partnership with the county. So we're your partners, as you know. We've displayed that in the beginning of this presentation to show you the commitment we've made to our relief and recovery, and we're asking for your partnership to make this really happen. Do you have any questions for me or our staff?
How does a person get a passport?
We can give you this one, Brad can get another one tomorrow. Hold on.
Could you also just email?
Everybody else, I mean.
The presentation?
I have the presentation.
Oh, thank you.
That's my computer, I'm doing it. Councilman, I'll email it to all of you.
Thank you so much, manager.
Commissioner, I just have one ask.
Yes, sir.
I have an ask.
Yes.
So the DNR Canal Commission, so the DNR Canal State Park is unique among state parks in the state of New Jersey in that there is an organization called the DNR Canal Commission.
Yes, we've met with them.
That commission is appointed by the governor, and there are numerous vacancies on that commission, including their chair. And they have been vacant since Governor Christie. And it has a significant impact because the DNR Canal Commission plays an important part in things like development review and other things that, when they can't have a meeting because they don't have a quorum, it has a significant impact. And Franklin Township has more of the DNR Canal State Park than any other municipality in the state.
That is correct.
So it does have a significant impact on us. And so as we look to do things, and this is wonderful, and I'm a huge fan of all of these things that you're doing, we need the state to begin to take action. And the Six Mile Run property, which constitutes about 2,700 acres of our midsection, is under the control of the DNR Canal State Park, and it too needs a great deal of attention. And that needs to be included in any discussions that we have with the state about the condition of those properties. So I would ask that that also be included as well.
I agree with you 100%, and yes, we have met with the DNR Canal Commission. We are aware that there are vacancies, and that could be part of those sample resolutions we put in there. One of the other concerns we have that was revealed to us during those meetings was that the plan, the master plan, am I saying it correctly, Walter, from the DNR Canal Commission, was made in the 80s.
Yes.
And it hasn't been updated. Made in the 80s and not updated. When I saw the paper, I had a flashback like I was back in college when you just saw the font.
Earlier.
It's really scary because that's the plan, and the planners cringe because, you know, as you were talking about uses with these warehouses, et cetera, you know, if you don't update your plans, which I applaud you guys for taking quick action on this issue and listening to your public and doing something about it, but with a plan from the 80s, it's scary. So that is another element that we have been pushing the state. We need to get an updated master plan for that, and we need to fill those vacancies.
I just have one question, more of a comment and advertisement. The Camp Sore Program?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for having that here in Franklin. A lot of our families in the summer, we have, the school district has a before and after care program, which allows families to work so they can pay their bills and provide food. But when summer comes, they're really left with big bills, and, you know, sometimes that's not an enriching experience for our young people. You know, and we're just excited to have that opportunity locally in the county park, and folks should sign up. It's, you know, $50 a week, it's about $200 total, but there is income assistance. So if you're low-income, you could end up paying a very reduced price. And so don't let the cost be a barrier. Make sure your students and your child has an opportunity to, you know, experience the outdoors in a safe environment throughout the summer, and that's a really important program, and thank you for doing that through the Y.
Yes, thank you so much for recognizing it. There is also meals provided for our children. And somebody that's in food service industry for my regular job, I am very painfully aware of costs of food that have just gone up and up. So, yeah, that's another component of savings for the families. So thank you, Councilman.
Any other questions? Thank you, Deputy Commissioner, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you for welcoming us. We appreciate it, and please, we look forward to being in touch with you to work together on these resolutions. Take care.
So going back to the agenda and trying to piece this back together, the next item would be council comments. I'd like to hear a motion that maybe tonight we can skip council comments. That's fine.
I make a motion.
Skip. Counselor. Second the motion.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of skipping.
Can I make a comment on skipping the comments? I'm just kidding.
You're in favor of skipping council comments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion is passed. I will, manager, do you have something?
The only thing I would report is probably what the councilman wants to talk about. A reminder that this Friday, beginning at 6:00 p.m., is the Independence Day fireworks celebration here in the municipal complex. Entertainment begins at 6:00, food vendors on site, and fireworks at 9:15, parking in and around the municipal complex area.
Thank you. Okay, time to pay the bills. Warrants in the amount of $3,440,552.49 on June 28th are presented to the Township Council for payment to have a motion on the warrants.
Moved.
Fucking democracy.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the warrants? Anyone want to pull anything or discuss anything? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt? Councilwoman Udine? Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yeah, we have a quorum still. Okay. We're now on to public hearing and adoption on second reading. We already did that. Ordinance on first reading, A and B, I guess we have to do. So A, ordinance number 4369-22, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 46, Personnel Policies, Section 46-4, nondiscrimination, add gender, identity, or expression. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, publication in accordance with the law, and public hearing, and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, July 12, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. Do we have a motion?
I move item A.
Moved and seconded. As everyone knows, I normally introduce and describe these ordinances, but this one was really brought forward by Councilmember Potasnick, so perhaps you would want to explain.
Yeah, this one is very simple. It just makes sure. Yeah, this one is very simple. It just makes sure that our nondiscrimination policy aligns with the state's nondiscrimination policy, which does not allow employers, and us being one of them, to discriminate based on gender, identity, or expression. So it adds that to our nondiscrimination statement and also to our actions.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
I abstained.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
Okay, very good. We are now on to ordinance number 4370-22, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, state of New Jersey, more particularly creating a new chapter 369, non-gender-specific restrooms. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption in first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law and public hearing. And final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council will be held on July 12, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Do we have a motion on this ordinance?
I move 4370-22.
Again? Moved in, seconded. Again, this was brought forward by Councilmember Potasnick. You have the floor, sir.
I appreciate it, and I just want to thank the Township Manager as well as the Administration Committee for looking over really all of our policies and seeing what we can do to be more inclusive. It's been a multi-month endeavor. One of the things that was confirmed is that, you know, we are unable, and that's a good thing, to discriminate based on when we're, you know, working with a vendor, and they can't discriminate either based on sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. And so that is good. So there's no policy on that. But this policy, simply put, is an ordinance to make single occupancy bathrooms, like the ones in your house, also available in public places. So what that means is, just like the one that you have in your home, if you have two bathrooms in your house, you don't put a sign on one and say male, and then the other one, say female, you just have a bathroom, and you know where it is, so you probably don't put a sign on it at all. And then you have another bathroom, again, probably without a sign. But in public places, we tend to put signs on those, and in many cases, they're gender-specific. This ordinance would require that those gender-specific signs are removed, and just a sign is replaced as simple as restroom, or non-gender-specific restroom, or non, you know, all-gender restroom, just like, you know, we have at home. So what bathrooms would be covered? They have to be single-use, meaning they're just for one person, with the exception if that individual needs assistance, like a handicap, single-use restroom, or a young child or family one, that, you know, that would be acceptable to have that person help you. And they have to have a lock. So this is not multiple stall restrooms that we're used to with, you know, more than one person in there at a time. This would be a private restroom. What businesses are covered? Places of public accommodation. So a municipality, like here in our buildings, office buildings, hotels, restaurants, places that serve food, movie theaters, theaters themselves, stadiums, bars, as well as beauty salons, and retail stores, and a couple of other things. And folks would have about a half a year to comply and just remove the sign that's currently there and replace it with a simple sign that says restroom. And there's an exception, which is if plumbing codes or any other codes within the state don't allow for that, then the bathroom would not need to be that way. So I just, again, want to thank everyone for their work on this. And I will say that the discussions were thorough, and the impacts on, you know, what it would mean to Franklin Township. But I think it's more than appropriate, specifically hearing from Dr. Nelson about what inclusion means for our young people. And I think someone had mentioned, I don't want to take away anyone's thunder, but, you know, for all of us have experienced when you have a bathroom line, many times, there are other benefits too, is being inclusive, but many times the women's line is longer than the men's. And if it's, you're waiting for single-use or single occupancy restrooms, this would help speed that up. So when the men's room is available, you could go ahead and go in there if you were a lady waiting for the restroom. And that is the summary of this. I'm happy to answer questions or if there's anything else, we could talk offline. It'll be a while before we talk about it again, according to what the mayor said.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
So I think we've covered all the first and second readings. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you. We are now on to consent agenda. Items A through R is listed in the consent agenda portion of this meeting are presented to the Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved in, seconded. Any discussion? Anyone want to pull an item or just discuss an item? Hearing none?
You did hear me.
Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
You dared hear me. You're going to say, "No council comments." Democracy rules today. Democracy is here.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Councilman Wright is asking for each vote to be, resolution be voted on separately. I don't want to speak for him, but I think that's what he's requesting of you.
I think that's what he's requesting to do. Do we have a motion? To do the consent agenda as published? Okay, we will go through each item.
No, so moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have one.
Moved in, seconded. All in favor of doing the consent agenda as published, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion is passed. So A through R, as published. Madam Clerk.
Was it motion? Actually, did the agenda?
There wasn't a, there wasn't a motion, there wasn't a motion to adopt the agenda, yes.
But then there was another motion that stepped over it, so.
Right.
I move.
We already did that.
I move the consent agenda, item A through R.
We just did that.
We did that.
We did that.
No, we just.
Hang on. Please, please use your mic, Mr. Attorney. I asked for a motion and a second on the consent agenda. I received it. I said, "Any discussion?" Mr. Wright indicated what he, what we all know he indicated. I then asked for a motion, basically to do it as published. We got a second, a first and a second, and a voice vote to do it. So I think we're at the point of a voice vote on the consent agenda. Initially, I started with, "We have a motion on the consent agenda."
Correct. And I believe that before there was a motion to adopt the consent agenda, before there was a motion to adopt the consent agenda, in fact, I think you said, "Any..." Mr. Wright said, "I want to remove all of them." So at that point in time, then procedurally, you then took, then you told the council on whether or not they want one vote. They said yes. Now you have to have that vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I was, that's what I was calling for.
Correct. And clerk, you called for a roll call, but the clerk said you hadn't made a motion.
No, I misspoke.
Oh, I'm sorry, clerk was wrong.
Okay.
I was defending her.
That was.
Do we need a motion now?
I swear I will never do that again.
A minute I can't have back.
Can I amend, motion to amend it?
No.
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 Okay.
Go ahead.
Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
Democracy in action. No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vasanella.
I believe it just passed. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to motion, and all I'm doing is trying to, so people don't feel disenfranchised. I have no stake in how many things are separated out. I'd like to motion that the council give Mr. Councilman Wright a few minutes to make whatever announcements that he thought were necessary for tonight. And just want to point out, I think what happened is when the motion was made or the suggestion to forego council comments, I don't think anybody did it purposely, but I think Mr. Councilman Wright wanted to comment, like you usually get a chance to comment, when a motion is made before it's voted on. And I think just accidentally, he got left out of that process. I don't want to speak for him, but I'm making a motion that if he feels something's necessary for him to tell the public tonight, that he's given a couple of minutes to do that.
Do we have a second?
I.
Moved in, seconded. Any discussion on this?
I have a question, I guess as part of the discussion.
Yes.
I apologize because I was in the lobby slash bathroom. So did we vote it on skipping council comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Are the all members present? And you have to be present to vote. Everyone agreed to skip council comments. Other discussion on the motion? Give Councilman Wright some time. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Francois.
No.
Mayor Kramer.
No.
Councilwoman Oni Jaka.
No.
Councilmember Potasnick.
No.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
Once again, democracy in action. Right vote.
We're now on to the consent agenda.
You're done.
I'm sorry, we're on to resolutions to be voted on separately. There are none. We're on to old business, boards, commissions, committees, vacancies. Does anyone have any nominations? Hearing none. There is no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
Moved in, seconded.
One.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay, and you're going to rule the day that you pull this crap.
Motion is passed. We adjourn. Good day, Franklin. Be well.